Good evening. Today is the 7th of December. This is the Special Board of Education meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District. At this time, we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no additions or changes to the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
You got them? Perry and Jeff.
Thank you.
All right. We're starting a new routine, just so everybody knows, just to make sure we get the motions and the seconds correctly. Sometimes I move on too quickly and leave her in the dust, so I'm trying to be better. Okay, what is this going here? All right, that brings us to... Do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, I just want to kind of introduce and...
We're always supposed to have a... We did a first motion and a second, then we have to vote?
Um, exactly. No?
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Oh, we didn't have to vote. You're right. You're right. See, I get excited and all of us in favor. Anybody opposed? No? Okay. Thank you, Jeff. And Perry, that's supposed to be your job. Are you advocating? All right.
It's not your job, it's Dan's job.
Okay. So, this is actually a special meeting that's a follow-up to our last meeting, and for those of you who were with us, we had a presentation. Basically, at that presentation, we learned some new information about our Capitol project. And then subsequently, after that meeting, we were informed that there was a change in the architect. So we knew two things at that point. One was that we would have some new architects in front of us, and that we were going to be presented with a plan that better represented some of the options we were looking for. So tonight, we're joined by Dan Woodside and Tom Ritzenthaler. And basically, the purpose of tonight is to go over, introduce new leadership to our Capitol project. And they're going to discuss, they've actually spent quite a bit of time, in a very short amount of time, working with several members of our team. And they're going to continue to work with our district leadership team next week. And the plan is to start to put together what options are we going to look at, and then from there, we'll determine both as a district leadership team and as a board, and then finalize it with the Board of Education, what options are we going to move forward with. So basically, tonight is a chance to meet the new architects, and also to hear what they've done to catch up to speed, and what are some of their initial thoughts moving forward. Tonight's not a rollout of a plan, nor is it any final decisions made. They're going to pick up the pieces, and certainly, for those of us at the table, and any of us who were either in the listening audience or in the audience know that we were really interested in hearing some options. So with that, I'd like to invite Dan and Tom to the podium.
Thank you, Greer. My name is Dan Woodside. I am one of the senior partners and executive principals at CS Arch. I have been with CS Arch for over 21 years, 30 years in this business, and since joining CS Arch, which way back when was Collins and Scoville Architects, I've focused my whole career on education. My partner, Tom Ritzenthaler, who also runs our Newburgh office, I work out of the Albany office, Tom and I and our other senior partners felt like we needed to make a change in architects. We quickly, the same day, actually, we made the change, I met with Greer, and we began to put wheels in motion in terms of your project. It's a very important project to us, and we want to make sure that the communications are better. We want to hear from you tonight where things can be better, and be sure that we move forward in a positive way for you and your school community. So with that, we got started right away. Kevin Schaefer, who was here at your last meeting, he's our lead mechanical engineer. He's still involved in the project, as is Steve Hollins. So we have, we've begun, and Tom will speak in a minute, and he's really the one who has, is taking the leadership, day-to-day leadership role on this project. I'll still stay involved. I've known Greer for my whole career, and Elliot as well. So I would like to let you know, I think you're in good hands. Our firm is still very strong. Again, our focus is education. This is what we do. We just felt like it was time to make a leadership change on your specific project. So with that, I'll have Tom join me and answer any questions that you have about, first about the leadership piece, and then get into some discussions about the project, so.
So, good evening. So first off, you know, as Dan had mentioned, this is a very, it's a very exciting project. There's a lot of opportunity in this project. And for myself, I love the focus on science. I think it's a really important facet of the education in the high school. And I've had a lot of opportunity over the last couple of weeks to really get myself up to speed with what the project entails, trying to pour over all the information, all of the meeting minutes that have been had to date. Elliot was gracious enough to give me his time to tour me through the facilities, and it really allowed us to reflect on where we think there are opportunities to respond to some of the board's comments with respect to the current scheme that was presented a few weeks ago. We met with some of the district leadership team last week, and started to lay out what we saw as some of the key elements in our evaluation. And we really do think that there are perhaps three other approaches to show the board and to give the board as background and consideration for bringing this project into a budgetary range that I think was expected when we presented a couple of weeks ago. So, of course, everyone is familiar with the option that was presented. I don't think that that's not a valid option. It is, but certainly exceeds the board's budget limitations or expectations. You know, but I think it actually drives some of the approach that we may want to look at, and what other options we may consider. And the first, of course, is can we take that same concept and can we reduce it? Can we make it more cost-efficient? And there are some strategies to do that. Reducing some of the new construction, reducing the need to build a whole new set of toilet facilities as we kind of gut out the pods. Can we avoid overbuilding the locker, over the top of the locker rooms, which is adding significant cost to that, to that option? And can we avoid having a lot of structural impacts with respect to the science classrooms? We were having to relocate a lot of the column structures within that building to make the pods work with the new central corridor scheme. So that is one approach that we're still looking at. Is there a way to take that existing scheme, the committee worked quite hard on that scheme to get it to the point where it was, and can we make it more cost-efficient? So that's going to be one thing that we present when we see the board next. The second option is really responding to a couple of other things that we asked both Kim and the, Kim, from a science perspective, there was a concern, a little bit of concern over the proportions of the room. The rooms in the scheme are actually quite lengthy, they're actually 25 by 53 foot in length. And so there was a concern over the proportion in serving the science program. So that's something we picked up on as well. So we're going to look at an option that still keeps the central corridor layout, but looks to create better proportioned science classrooms, as well as seeks to eliminate the need to adjust major components of the structural system of that building. So it would still address the need to remove the central bathroom core, because obviously, from a supervision standpoint, and just from an efficiency standpoint, it's very difficult to work around that central toileting core and make a new arrangement. So we're looking at that, and we do think we have a scheme that can, that can meet that objective. And in doing so, we would approach the sciences a little differently. Instead of having the sciences all on the upper floor of the pods, we would look at centralizing sciences all within one pod, and it would be the larger of the two. And then we would backfill the remaining pod with classrooms, and then obviously, the sciences that were in the main part of the building would be converted to classrooms as well. So that's an option we were looking at. We do know that it's going to be certainly a lot more cost-efficient. We aren't going to be building new stair towers, so that's going to be a difference as well. We're going to kind of try to internalize the stair towers, because that new construction was impacting our overall cost. And we're trying to also look at putting the toileting as internal construction, not having to build new construction to serve that toileting facility. And of course, with that option, we're also looking at eliminating the need to have that elevator in that location. You do have an elevator that serves the building. Really isn't the need for the second elevator to serve just the pods. So those are some of the ideas that are going to really help us reduce costs. I think that from a proportion of classroom and how the rooms are laid out, I think the science folks are going to be very happy with that. And so I think we're going to be able to present you that. And I think we're going to do two variations of that option, because there are some things that we can move around as variations, which will just be kind of a choice. We may do that at the next DLT and only present a centralized option, just to keep it simple. So that would be option two. I think we're calling them option one, two. And now, and then option three, we still think it's worth exploring, keeping all the sciences where they are, and what is the impact to expanding them to serve and meet the current guidelines for science program? And what kind of impact does that have on our classrooms, on our number of classrooms for the children we have to serve in the high school? So we're going to look at that option. I think it's less desirable, of course, because it keeps science spread out throughout the building. It's nice to have them in one central core facility. At least that's what we continue to hear as we approach the process. But we still think it warrants looking at that option as a baseline of information, and that will give the board kind of the good, better, best variations relative to both how we serve the program that's been offered, and then the budget in alignment with that. We are still looking at all of the HVAC upgrades, of course. They're fairly independent building by building. We're looking very hard at North Park, because that building obviously has the humidity issues. We had proposed building a small addition to that building to serve some of the newer systems, really trying to eliminate the need to have that addition and use some internal space for those systems. Again, in a way to try to shave our cost, keep it very cost-effective, and also keep the building aid as efficient as possible, because likely for mechanical room, they won't give us any building aid. So that's our approach right now. We're in the midst of it. We're going to have a couple of meetings next week with both high school to work out just the science rooms themselves, the layouts and such, so we can fold that into the planning. And then also with the district level team, and we're really focused on coming back to the board to present all of these options in full at the board meeting in January 13? 11, 13?
11, might be the 11th.
Might be the 11th.
Well, we all have it written down somewhere.
But, but we will have that in advance of that, of course. We're regularly integrating with Palumbo. I've known Lou a long time, have worked with Palumbo in several other districts, and so we've had a lot of time to sit with Palumbo, go through the details of the existing estimate, talk about where there might be some ways to provide some efficiencies to the budget. We're also going to be doing some additional testing for hazardous materials, again, to make sure that we know everywhere where there's impact with hazardous materials, so we can make sure that it's covered in the budget estimate, so it's as accurate as possible. And so we'll get information to Lou as early as possible, so he has a lot of time to turn that around. We'll have a chance to actually reconcile the estimate before we actually present to the board. Any questions about that?
I guess I have to ask what the approach to the HVAC is, because if I remember right from that sheet, just it alone for the buildings was quite a bit above our stated limit.
Right. So there's really two approaches to the HVAC. Either we consider to just focus our efforts on certain buildings to reduce the overall cost of the bond, or we look at trying to see if we can do portions of the existing systems as replacement or upgrades, instead of doing comprehensive, you know, replacements of the HVAC systems in those buildings. So we're, we're looking at that. It's a little, it's a little more difficult, but I know Kevin's working on that, and ways to try to, you know, present other strategies relative to HVAC.
We also know you had a conversation about hydronic versus steam, and the potential of keeping some of that steam system in place, so he's taking a hard look at that as well to see if that's something that is, would be cost-effective to do part of that now and hold off on, on some of the steam system. So that's a, that's a major component in what we're looking at.
Okay. And as I mentioned earlier, I really want to know what the usable life for the, especially the high school is. As it stands now, with no changes, is it at its usable life? If we change to hydronics, is that going to increase the usable life past the bond? You know, our bonds are, I believe you said 15 years usually. I'd like to have a plan that keeps the high school as a viable building for at least the next 20 years.
Right, right. Yeah, 15, it'd be 15 years on renovations for the bond. So generally, the systems will outlast that bond, and that's, that's generally how we look at the useful life of a building as well, because most times, you know, the structure, the walls, the systems are going to outlive all of us if it's, if it's been well-constructed. And certainly, you've got some marquee buildings in this district that are going to live out all, outlive all of us for sure. But it's generally the system, so the roofs, the exterior envelope, the mechanical systems, that's where we can put some life, useful life system, age, age limitations on, and get that information for you.
Along that line, I don't think that we should limit the scope of that request to just the high school. I think we need to understand whether there's any of the heating systems in this project that are close to end of life, because that would obviously prioritize them.
Okay.
What, yeah, it just prompted my memory. Elliot, how long are we away from the next five-year BCS? Is this the third year, 2020? Okay. So our, our current BCS is three years old. Okay.
Good. Anybody, any other questions?
We, I'll just make a comment, too. We have, we did meet with the district leadership team, was it last week? I don't know, it all blends together.
Last week.
And we had an opportunity to go through our SWOT analysis from last year, as well as revisit some of our current thinking, if we had to pare down, you know, what are our priorities? And I shared that with Dan and Tom. So there has been a lot of very productive conversation to say, okay, we're not only going to get some options, but how do we recalibrate our thinking to say, maybe we can't do it all right away, and if so, how, how do we go through a process of prioritizing? So some of the, three of the board members were there, so that was a productive session, very well received by the district leadership team to go back to the table and look at it. You know, we want to be realistic in, in what we go out to the public to ask for as far as our next Capitol project.
Any other comments?
I guess I'll make one other comment. I, which I also mentioned earlier, I personally would like to see if we have to do only two buildings, them done right, and put our resources in, in this case, I believe it would be better for the high school and the middle school, but, and then anything else after that would be fine. But my goal would be to make as many buildings as we can and fully functional. So that's just my opinion, that's not the board's opinion.
Sure. And we want to present those options to you, so you can make those decisions based on some, some good, clear information.
Yeah, as part of the presentation, if it's going to be differentiated, and we've been talking about several buildings, not all the buildings, I'd like to understand the thinking as to where the air quality is least acceptable, and having that one of the priorities that we want to clean up, because that's been an issue we've dealt with. I've been on the board for over 15 years, and we've dealt with that issue for at least a solid 10 of them at one time or another.
You go ahead. No, no, you go.
Well, I guess I would, just want to weigh in with Doug. I can appreciate your thoughts about wanting to make, you know, concentrate and think that you're going to make two buildings right. I might take a different approach, and I would look at it and say that I'd want to be looking at, at the highest priority. I mean, from a program standpoint, I think the science rooms are important, but at the same time, I do think we need to be looking at air quality. I think we've got a lot of issues in a lot of buildings, and I'm looking for some real answers and some real suggestions as to what we've got out in those buildings, and recognize that, you know, this, whatever, whatever we do today may be all we're doing for a while. And to have a high school and middle school that get all the benefit and find that our elementary schools, the air quality is continuing to suffer, or the heating system is continuing to fail, you know, and I guess the other thing I'd want to address is that we've had some conversations about, you know, it seems like we're always talking about doing heating repairs, you know, working on heating. You know what? That's just a way of life. We've got as many buildings as we have, we are always going to be talking about heating repairs. I'm not as concerned about trying to communicate what we're doing and, and why we're doing heating repairs again. We're doing different heating repairs over, you know, we're at each building. Just given the, the size of the district, the number of buildings, the number of systems we've got, I am much more concerned about looking at the general condition of those systems and where the weakest points are.
I actually believe, five years out, six years out, maybe seven years out, we will be in a position to have another Capitol project pending, based on our debt service.
I would, I would hope that we would, and I, and I agree that we will.
I don't think we're going to do something and then not do anything else after that.
But, no, but, but seven years is a long time. If we've got failing systems, to live with a failing system for seven years because we decided that we wanted to make sure that everything was, got done at the high school or the middle school would be a huge injustice.
If it's failing, that's fine.
Yeah. I think that, my point is, I just want to make sure that we're focusing, looking at where the greatest needs are for the infrastructure of the buildings.
Any other comments? Denise?
Well, you kind of addressed some of my, my concerns, which is why I wanted you to go ahead of me. I, no, I'm, I'm concerned, I'm probably getting a little ahead of myself, but when it comes to prioritizing, yes, we have to look at like what would be a timeframe for our next Capitol project, and I, I know we have to prioritize, and I know you've addressed a lot of that in the DLT.
Starting, yeah.
And everything. So in addition to how you're going to break it down, if you're recommending that we, in order to save money and cut our costs to meet our budget now, you know, that, I guess, I would also just like to know, like, well, okay, then that means that this is what we're going to be looking at in five years, and, and why it's worth waiting five years, or it's possible to wait five years for that regarding specifically for the heating? Right? I mean, that's what we're talking about, what we can wait and what we can't wait. So I think that's, I think we're all on the same page there.
Do we have a 20-year financial plan?
Linda does. No. That's the topic of our board retreat.
It won't be 20 years, but a few years.
Well, yeah, my point here is that, one of the important considerations...
Right now, I think right now, the answer is no.
Yeah, one of the important considerations and, and relevant decision point here is how long is it until our next Capitol project? Because we know there will be one.
That we, that we do have, and Linda has presented, but I'll turn it over to Linda, because, go ahead.
So we currently have a debt service drop-off in 2020, and that's what we're trying to fit into, to work with this project. We have another debt service drop-off coming in 2023, so...
Okay, so that effectively says that...
Six years from now.
We could start this, this, this process again in three years?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But I have a question. When is the roof repairs? We know that's coming up. Is that going to be, perhaps be considered in that?
It may. It depends on what we, how we use our capital reserve, because we did set aside some of that, those funds for the, for the roofs.
Okay. Anyone else? I think this has been very productive.
Last thing I just wanted to leave you with also is, I, I appreciate your patience. I apologize for where we're, where we are at today, but please rest assured that Tom and my approach to communications is very open and very transparent, and we do not want to repeat or, or create surprises for you. That's the last thing we, we want to have happen, so.
Well, you came with what we wanted to hear.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, the options here are really good. That is what we wanted to hear.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Safe trip home.
Thanks.
The, the, it's Hillary signing in Rhinebeck, so anybody driving north might get stuck in traffic. Yeah, take the detour up 9G. Thank you.
Okay. I guess we don't need, unless you want without, why are you not here, any other discussion on the Capitol project, which is the next item? We kind of did both in...
Oh, yeah, they were, yeah.
So, all right.
We did, we did hear a number of, I'd like to see this, and I want that. I don't think that we have a cohesive priority yet, in terms of how we're going to approach what we see. So we can either discuss that now, or we can do that at the same time as, as we have numbers in hand.
Well, I think we have to wait to see what they come back with, more details, and then, and then discuss that, but you're absolutely right. We need to...
I'm not sure we want to wait till then, Doug. I mean, we, we've got considerations that we should be talking about to make sure that they're not, you know, they're going to make some assumptions and go their, their direction with the fitting in the project, but I don't want to surprise them in the end. So, oh, that's nice, except we'd rather have had, in terms of the discussion, just on, on the heating.
I mean, isn't that why we have a DLT?
Yeah, I think if you, you know, the DLT is...
That's where it's going to come from.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we have added additional meetings. We've invited the larger DLT to come on 12/13. We've added a meeting on January 8th. And again, the, the district leadership team, for countless years preceding myself and, and others, has been the group of people that really roll up their sleeves and spend hours and then make recommendations. Again, the final decision-making power obviously belongs to the board, but they've been working on this for a couple of years now. And so Dan and Tom are coming to our DLT meeting next Wednesday, and we're going to, we already started some of this work. I don't think that anybody's going to be too far off. And again, the DLT is... And again, the DLT is, I will say, the DLT is not really going to roll up their sleeves on the HVAC stuff. What they may do is, once we hear, once we all collectively hear the information about end of life, I think we'll all be able to put our heads together and prioritize. And again, the DLT isn't going to make a decision. They'll come up with a couple of narrowed-down options. You'll have all of the information from the architects and engineers as well. So I think we'll, I mean, that's not to say don't have a conversation now, but.
I mean, I think, I think we really need to hear from the architects, is what their information, or what their review of end of life, or, you know, continued usable life of the equipment that we have. The other thing I would add to that is I'd like to see, I'd like to see Elliot's input on that as well. I mean, he's living with this equipment now. I'm assuming that they're going to be asking him a lot of questions, or have been asking him a lot of questions, but, you know, he's the one that's going to be living with us and knowing, you know, when we make a decision that we're doing this and not that, he's still got that.
It would, I think it would also be helpful, if the DLT is meeting with the two gentlemen also, whatever the results of that meeting were, as input to our discussion also.
Absolutely, yeah.
And Elliot and Linda, Linda from the financial, Elliot from the facilities, have also joined in the last year, every one of those meetings.
The question is when that happens? That's the idea.
Yeah, so I'll tell you what the timing looks like now. The DLT and the architects are going to meet on 12/13, and we're going to try and get as many people as we can, knowing that there will be some people that work during the daytime that can attend that meeting, but we're kind of time crunching it. We can let you know any preliminary thinking. It won't be a presentation, because the board meeting is 12/14, but we can give you an idea as to what it is, the, what took place at that meeting, give you an update. We're having a special meeting in the evening on January 8th. Thank you, Bobby, for finding a date where there's no conflict with everybody else. And then, so the architects are coming again on January 8th to also work with the DLT. So by the time the architects present to the board, that first meeting in January, with some of the options, they'll also include what, what were some of the findings and conversations that we have at the district leadership team? Again, not decisions, but what was supported by this community-based team that includes community members, parents, teachers, administrators, the whole, the full gamut. So you won't be operating in a vacuum. It'll be vetted by our community-based team.
Is it possible, I mean, we, we thought it was beneficial to have a board presence at this last DLT meeting. Is it beneficial to try and have a board presence at any of these other DLT meetings?
We have three, yeah, we have three board members on the DLT.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, the, the, yes, just, and that's good clarification. We have three board members on, on the district leadership team. So this, this wasn't done in a vacuum. This is almost like a subcommittee of the board. So they're, hopefully, if they can all make it to these meetings, they will be, the board is right there at the table with us, three of them.
Okay, to help the rest of us better understand.
Yeah.
Stuff, thank you.
Yeah. That's on the 13th, is it at 9 o'clock?
10.
10.
So that would be my question. Steve, would you be able to go?
Yeah, I'm planning to be there.
Well, now I'm confused, because
I thought it was Mike.
Well, yeah.
Mike, those three. Mike, I'm not, I was there.
Oh, right, right. Okay.
So, okay, so the three current DLT members.
I'm Mike, Harry, and Steve.
Okay. That's fine. I just, I thought there was one, just swap out for one meeting.
Can we get a report from the board members as to the thinking, because how they perceive the DLT's information for consideration between then and when we're going to have discussions? Because normally, we wouldn't hear again back till January 8th, or, actually, was it the 9th is the next meeting?
11th.
11th. Well, you could, you could, they could actually report on the 14th as well, in December. And the only caveat I would say is that, you know, now we have two brand-new board members to the district leadership team. So, you know, that's fine, but the team has been in existence for several years now. So, you know, just know that we have two brand-new members. Jeff needed to, for, to step down, and Doug's relinquishing his spot, but, and we'll just continue on.
I'm forgetting about it.
What's that?
I'm forgetting that, too.
But, you know.
No, good. I forgot we were meeting on the 14th, so that's good, so we can get an update.
Yeah. I just need an understanding that if, at this stage of the game, if new board members are joining, we have a team of 25 people who don't want to step back two years in time. There's been a legacy of an extraordinary amount of work, so.
If I could, I don't want to assume, I believe I know, but I don't want to assume, the original plan for this capital project, what were the components of it? One was the science labs, one was the HVACs in all of the remaining buildings? Or was it to be determined how far we were going to go with that?
Well, the science labs, yes. That was the number-one priority of the entire focus, because that's not ever going to be end of life. It was end of life 25 years ago, and, you know, that's just something that philosophically and instructionally, you have to make a decision when it's time to do science labs. And everybody, hands down, 100% consensus on the science labs. The HVAC, we had asked about it being in all of the buildings, and where we got hung up was they just said, okay, and went with all of the buildings, and never once gave us a price tag. So we didn't have a chance to recalibrate and say, if they had said to us three months ago, oh, you can't do all of the buildings, go back to the drawing board. So there's, they're already back at the drawing board and asking the same good questions you're asking. Okay, so how do we determine which HVAC projects are we going to do? And they come up with things like health and safety as being a priority, end of useful life. They came up with the same questions and the same thinking that you're doing now. So we'll kind of all do this together in parallel, but that's exactly the thinking is, okay, well, look at health and safety, and end of life, and then how do we prioritize?
And the third, the third option that came, or the third item that came in, I guess the third item came in, and I'm not sure whether it was intended originally, it was on the periphery originally, or it just got drawn in by the presentation they gave us, was the bathrooms in the pod. I mean, they got sucked in because they said we could do it when we're doing it and make our job easier and a whole bit, but that, like, indicated it resulted in an external building or something like that. Has that always been a thought, to do some rework of the bathrooms there? Because they
Yeah, I remember from the start, Elliot had suggested, right from the start, to redo the bathrooms, when we redid the pod.
Yeah. Our notes from our project team meetings, we knew that there was, if you're going to do the HVAC and you're running all of that type of plumbing, not that that's the plumbing, but that, you know, you, you look at the bathrooms. The bathrooms were not a given. Part of the problem is that we kept saying, and I kept saying, stop adding things until we start to see some price tags. So, yeah, it's nice to have a bathroom, it's nice to have a rooftop garden, it's nice to build out here. It's, you know, there's a lot of nicest, but until you find out what the price tag is. And what I know that our committee is really dedicated to is, you know, the science labs are the priority, as well as the HVAC. And the scope of the project should adhere to those two pieces as closely as possible. And then, yes, where you're right is, if it makes sense, based on our building condition survey and everything else, that if you're taking down this, to not do the bathroom right now would be, somebody would say, what were you thinking? Then, yes. Where we took that leap of faith was when they showed us a design and had the bathrooms actually outside in a new building. Well, that changes things, because we didn't see the price tag on that. And that's why they're saying, okay, replace, replace the bathrooms where they are, and maybe not reconfigure all of that. And that's the kind of thinking they're doing. They did, by the way, watch the last board meeting, too, so that they could see what, what happened, what took place at the last meeting.
Okay, are we good?
I think it's going to be, it's going to be a good process. I think we'll pick up the pieces and move forward.
Moving on then?
Yeah, I'd like to just congratulate our, our other Dutchess County school districts who, who did have capital project votes and passed.
They all passed.
And the Red Hook auditorium, that's 20 years in the making, so. But I did send, as a superintendent, to another superintendent, and I did reach out to all three superintendents and congratulate them for their
What ones have capital projects?
Beacon, Spackenkill, and Red Hook, all on Tuesday night.
Right. All passed.
Yeah.
And Spackenkill had a record turnout.
Yeah.
More, more turnout for that vote than
And for the budget, for the elections, yeah.
Yeah.
For track. For track?
But I think, interesting enough, because my son called me up, he's a resident, one of my sons, is a resident in Spackenkill, he called up for some clarification two days before the vote. And I don't want to pat us on the back necessarily, but their association and questions they asked with issues we had dealt with, when we put in our sports complex, and one of the things they were concerned about is that, he said that they've had a history in Spackenkill of not following up their capital improvements with plans to maintain what they've improved. And the questions, my son was asking me, well, how'd you guys handle the future of the athletic facilities in terms of projected costs? He said, well, we factored in the savings and costs, once it converted over, but we also anticipated the necessity of replacing the turf itself at a period of time, and we prepared for that in advance through having a capital improvement fund, which we could be utilized at that time, but could be expanded, and the votes required. And I don't know if they had the votes for that, or they're going to wait until the spring vote. But some thoughts that we had considered here several times have filtered out out there, and they're, they've become concerns for them also, which I think is a good thing to spread throughout the whole area of this district among the boards, is, you know, what you build, you better be prepared to maintain, and you ought to be thinking about it before you build, so you're not trying to scramble at the end. And, you know, based on the information we see lately in the papers regarding Cuomo and his concerns with the budgets and stuff like that, I think it's significant to, you know, he's talking, he's not talking small numbers.
Right.
I mean, talking about a $4 billion gap plus? And how's he going to close that, and what effect it's going to have on us?
Okay, I'd like to move on to public participation.
Doug, if I could just add one other thing about the capital project in Red Hook, I will say that the success of that project comes by great effort of the Education Foundation, was, was very, very involved in communication with
This is the second or third time that they've wanted to build more, right?
Well, yeah, it's, there's, this is actually the third
Third time, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But the Education Foundation did an excellent job of communicating and making people aware of it, and getting the vote out, so. Just one of those things that we should be looking at, the Hyde Park Education Foundation could, could play a service for us in the future as well.
Yeah.
So at this time, I have a motion for public participation.
So moved? Second?
Same, same old, same old, right? You got that, Perry?
Steve?
Yeah, Perry and Jeff.
Add two.
All those in favor? Oppose? Thank you. If anybody would like to address the board, please step up to the mic and.
So you have to give my name and address?
No, just your name. Your name would be fine.
Sweet Barbara.
Okay.
Okay. Three items I put down, actually, four. I went out to the calendar onsite on the website today, a few hours ago, and there's still a vote in February out there. So is the calendar going to be kept up to date, or are you going to just let it ride? Because that vote is still there on the Tuesday in February. You're mentioning the Hyde Park Education Foundation, and I'm thinking about Hyde Park Elementary. Somebody doesn't leave their house without a roof on it, or a bed roof. So I know you folks don't want to do the roof for Hyde Park Elementary, because it's going to cost you too much, because you're not going to get any state aid back. But there's a potential project for Education Foundation, maybe, to put it in. And we're talking about all these projects. I can see there's a difference. Is it a want, or is it a need? Okay? Do you want something, or do you actually need something? So we've got to think of this in this way. Is it a want? Is it a need? For example, the bathrooms over at Havland during election time, it's very hard to get into the stalls, because they're not that deep. And I'm thinking, I've, I'm a smaller size than some people. Some people trying to get in there, I don't know how they're going to get in and get the door closed. Okay, so that's something to think about when, if you're going to talk bathrooms, district leadership team, to make it a little bit deeper, please. And if you're going to do it, do it. And if you're not, then we'll live with what we have. Okay?
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? I have a motion to close public participation. Okay. Home favor? Oppose? Thank you.